In your packet you should have the amendments from the August 23 council meeting. And your pleasure on that.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion to approve in a second on the amendments, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Department reports, we have a couple of issues, Wade, do you want to give them an update on the water line break?
Yeah, we fixed the water line late, last week we had an all six inch, I call it transited, asbestos cement is what it is, line that had ruptured, was leaking, we estimated between one million and one and a half million a day, and doesn't start facing until, I guess it was in the Wednesday morning, I believe, of last week, whenever it had washed out underneath the road enough where it created a sinkhole, we repaired the line, actually had to do a couple different repairs, we also found, I guess repaired two areas of the road where it had been washed out underneath it, and while, we went ahead and checked out the sewer line out there, there was some washout around the sewer line that's in the street, we repaired that, and we have that done, we're gonna go ahead and finish videoing the rest of the sewer, and hopefully we don't have to do any more there. Everything, the streets opened back up, we've got gravel filled in, we don't have pavement back, because we're waiting to see if we have to do any more down, down the hill, on the road there. I don't have any real good estimates yet as far as what the total cost to the city is, we have, with clear budgets and things, I don't think it's gonna be a budget buster for the year or anything, but it's, it's gonna be a fairly expensive leak, and we estimate we lost probably four to four and a half million gallons of water, which, that's about $4,000, $4,500 dollars just in lost water right there, plus the cost of repair. I should actually have the pretty good detail on the total cost of that, for those of you that are interested at the committee meeting next month.
Okay, thank you.
Just a few things, which I know a couple of the other departments will touch on as well, on the financial statements, the big thing was new equipment on fire, which I'm sure you're all aware of what that will be, I'm sure more to talk about a little more. We keep finding stuff all the time, it seems like, that I need to recap unfortunately, so that's why it does still say draft on it, hopefully one of these days I will take that off for you all. Other than that, we, I will bring up this, these two invoices we did receive this past, this past vendor time, that we cut checks twice a month in this past time, we have two invoices here to Hudson Motors for repair of, one is a, or actually both for police vehicles, one is for $1,500, looks like it follows, you know, new manifold, gasket, and the other one I believe is, you can correct me if I'm wrong there chief, basically to replace a whole new engine, and that's about $5,000. These continue to add up, and I don't know much else to say, other than we really need to probably push, be pushing on this, hopefully get this tax, this sales tax passed, so we can afford to not keep spending all these, this needs repair monies, and actually get new vehicles, because I see these repair bills coming in far too often. If you're gonna spend $5,000 to $6,000 to replace, to repair just the engine on the vehicle, is it worth it to keep repairing, or do we need to actually bite the bullet and maybe buy one?
Yeah, one of the things I want to add to that is that vehicle was a two-year-old vehicle, so, the one that we had to replace a huge amount, and her work, how far has I had no credit, I should have been out of the system three years ago. If we'd have been keeping up with our car replacement system, it would have been gone a couple of years ago.
I don't believe any vehicles have been purchased in the last couple of years, is that correct, other than what?
Last year, we didn't replace any vehicles the year before, we did get three.
So 2011 you didn't buy any?
2011 we did buy three.
Bought three in 2011, we should have bought four.
Should have bought four.
And then this last year, 2012, we have bought none.
None, right.
We're about, we're probably about seven cars behind where we should be.
That it?
I've got about three things that I could bring to the council real quick, one thing is, as you all well know, we've got the rescue truck in, we run the checks for that, there is some equipment that I'm buying separate to save money, I found that I can sit buying it with the truck, we debited outside sources, and got it cheaper, saved some money. Second thing goes along with, they're talking about equipment repairs, just got one engine back for $2,600, and got one in Conway right now, we worked on, and it's gonna fix looking a lot more than that, so, we can cross the desk as well. Third thing I'd like to bring up is, I don't know if everybody's seen the story in the paper, about the gentleman that had the heart attack on the bypass, and was in the big truck, and he took out some cars, he may have had a heart attack. Of course, people was there, started CPR, we got there unseen, I was carrying an AED that, which is not the city's, and we shopped him, we got him back alive, and he actually come and seen me yesterday, he's in that poor recovery, which really neat. The downfall of that is, I'm using other departments equipment, that's my AED from Harman, the real fire department, which allows me to keep it with me at all times. What I'm asking for is to see if the council would entertain funding some more of these AEDs to put in our staff vehicles, we currently have three, but they're on our trucks, rightfully so, but we also need them in our staff vehicles, because we respond to these calls as well, and they're a little more quicker around town. These things are running about $1,500 apiece, and with no budget for any type of new equipment whatsoever, it's kinda hard to come up with.
Injuries?
Yeah, I mean, and that goes along with like City Hall and, you know what I mean, I don't know if Pat would like, I can have any of his stuff, but that's, that's a minimal what we need. You know, these things are everywhere, AEDs, I don't know if you all are familiar with them, but they're, they're made for, you know, anybody's any kind of basic training to use, and they save this man's life.
Could you guess, maybe by our committee meeting, how many we're looking at here?
Yes, sir.
Including the police department?
Do we, do we want to put one here in City Hall also? Besides just the police department, and their vehicles, and the car?
He's gonna have a heart attack.
Could have, any moment.
I would say let the chiefs look at that, I mean, they should be the expert.
Yeah, if they're right there.
Use your best judgment, let us know what you think.
Well, I think the building itself needs at least one, whether it be at the PD, and we can use it down this end, I do believe the building itself needs at least one.
Matt, did you have anything? Do you guys have any questions for the department heads? Committee reports, Community, Environment, Services, and Welfare.
We have no report here.
Finance Committee.
No report here.
Internal Affairs.
No report here.
Public Safety.
No report here.
Public Works and Transportation.
No report here.
Resources and Policy.
One item there, we have, during our committee meeting two weeks ago, we looked at a ordinance for the ability to have domestic chickens in the city limits, and at that time, when we had it before the committee, I hadn't had a chance to really go over the ordinance, and I've since spent a considerable amount of time looking at that ordinance and comparing it to other ordinances in other cities, and the ordinance that we looked at initially was very weak in several areas, and I spent several hours, kind of going over those different ordinances from different cities, and combining them into a new ordinance in the city, and I'd like to make sure that we table that thing today, and come back into the committee with it, and I'm sure that what I wrote needs some thinking also, to deal with the chief, and see before we actually go forward with that ordinance.
Okay.
You making that move?
Yes.
About a second.
Have a motion in a second to table the chicken ordinance, and come back to committee with it, any discussion? Mark?
So, so does that bring us then to where we were in a similar situation like last year, where we're two weeks before the election, and it becomes this big commotion during the election, huh?
Appears that way.
I, I, we've got, we've got an ordinance, I've read through what you've read, don't have any disagreements with it?
Well, I've talked to the chief, and he has, he wants to tweak it a little bit, and if Van was here, I'd be glad to tweak it and get a vote on it tonight, but without Van being here, and without being able to speak with the, with the chief, and have him show his concerns, I, because like I said, I wrote this myself, just spent about three hours.
And I appreciate the work that you put into it, I just don't want to see this go through another four months of tweaking again.
That's, that's not my intent, that's not my intent, my intent was to try to get it passed tonight, but after looking at the original ordinance, I don't think that it protects the citizens, or the, or the ability of the city to enforce the regulation, if it comes down to that, and that's the reason I tweaked it, and I would like to see it go forward, but I just can't, I can't agree tonight, based on fears that it would be a very poor ordinance, I, I don't know, I hate to pass an ordinance and have to add to the ordinance later on.
I agree. Can I ask a question, Colin?
Sure.
Is the only changes you've submitted were the definitions alone, or is there more in here?
No, the first two pages are basically, well, up until we get to the 6.08.03, that's where my changes take place, and so I've got basically three pages of changes, or additions to it, or the original ordinance just, was basically the first page, and through item eight.
So everything below definitions is additions value?
Correct.
What I can tell you, I've already looked at it, there's only one change that I would like to make, but I do want to use the word by Van, and that would be under the enforcement of the 608, 406, upon inspection, the animal control officer designated parts of the provision that the ordinance had not been, or not been complied with, section 60804, which is the enclosures and the animal welfare, the animal control officer is designated shall, and then the rest of the states, like it does, that way it kinda lets you know where I was at. My biggest concern was, that is 30 days before we can do anything, and it's 30 days, I don't have any problems with that, but I was afraid that could get confusing on, if somebody had 12 chickens out there, we wouldn't be able to do anything for 30 days, and if that cleans all of that up, then we can start flagging citation for every day or over the number of chickens we're supposed to have.
You know, I know we've done ordinances here, something like that, two years especially, we've started the ordinance and tweaked it during the time that we passed it.
I don't have a problem with that, if, if the chief is, you know, he's comfortable with that, and if you guys are comfortable tweaking it after.
You're saying the first reading?
Yes.
Get that through.
Okay, yeah, I have no problem with that, go ahead and do the first reading tonight. I just don't, I just want to make sure that we get.
I'm pretty sure we've done that, have we not?
Yeah, lots of times.
You're absolutely right.
I just don't want, I don't want to, you know, after the fact.
We have a, we have a motion to table currently.
I know, I know we do.
Okay, well, we're gonna have a vote on it then.
Yes. We have a motion in a second on the floor.
Roll call please.
Roll call vote.
No.
Shannon Snow.
No.
Harrison Epps. Joe Crockett.
No.
Dan Sherrill.
No.
Johnny Savage.
Yes.
Floyd Baltimore.
No.
Wendell Stevens.
No.
Motion to table fail.
Okay, we'll make a motion that we, place the ordinance on first reading by title only.
Second.
A motion in a second to place the ordinance on its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Roll call vote. Shannon Snow.
Aye.
Joe Crockett.
Aye.
Dan Sherrill.
Aye.
Johnny Savage.
No.
Floyd Baltimore.
Aye.
Wendell Stevens.
Aye.
Dave Fitton.
Aye.
Motion passed, motion carries. Can I read that?
You gotta read it. An ordinance replacing Harrison City Code Section 6.08.02, other animals and fowl to regulate chickens and provide penalties for violators.
All right, we have a tax mileage resolution, you should have it in your packet. Certifying the tax mileage rate to the county for the year 2012, at exactly the same mills that were certified last year, it's something we have to do once a year, or the county won't collect our mileage for, so I would entertain a motion to.
This is housekeeping in this case.
So move.
A motion in a second to pass the resolution, certifying general tax mileage rates for year 2012, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. All right, expected health insurance rate increase, we met with our health insurance company last week, and they said to expect about a 10% increase in our health insurance, which amounts to probably close to $65,000 a year for the city. We will have to decide in conversations at committee whether or not we are going to split any of that with the employees, and particularly how much, so, that's something we need to look forward to.
Didn't we get a $120,000 bump last year?
Yes.
And we did not pass any of that along to the employees?
No.
We ate it.
We ate it.
Is that affecting our first state?
Yeah, we'll know for sure sometime late October usually, but.
How much?
Probably about $65,000, 10%. Somewhere close to that.
I know, obviously we can't ask exact people, because we don't want to discuss that in public, but as far as elected officials, I know we voted that out, where councilmen aren't covered, if somebody was ex, we have several, ex aldermen, are they covered in the cobra also, as part of our claims forever, even though we voted that out?
No.
Only for three years.
Just for three years after.
It all depends, situation, there's so many regulations on that, on that cobra that, you know, some people are covered for like 18 months, some people are covered, if they got a problem or something, I think, they could be covered for life.
And then we had a couple expenses claims this year also, so there's been a couple expensive claims.
How about workers' comp, how's it looking?
Wade, you want to address workers' comp, where we're at on that?
We're looking at what, probably 12?
About 12% increase, I think.
Oh, look at his finger. I was playing basketball.
We had about 16 claims.
I think our claim rate's going down.
It's going down, the severity's going down, but the amount, it's going, in public works, we, we, light safety a big part of the culture there, and we're pushing that quite a bit.
Training.
We're encouraged training quite a bit, and then the ones that handle those injuries, we're addressing it a bit different also, as far as the eligibility of light duty work in the past, we just didn't find light duty, so then we're getting paid out on workers' comp. There's fine stuff for people to do as productive as light duty, and that will help us with our.
Claims.
Claims and rights in the future.
Is there anything going down?
Probably not, at this point, doesn't look like it. Feral cat committee progress, they've met twice, had several conversations with some of the veterinarians in the area, they're meeting with the vets this week, they'll have another committee meeting here in October, there's several of the vets that have agreed to spay and neuter feral cats for free, volunteers will trap them, with the help of the animal control, trap them, get them to the vets, get them spayed and neutered, and then move them into another area where they're not infringing on somebody's property on their rights, where they, where they're not unwelcome. We're trying to set up different sanctuary areas where they can move them to, we've had a discussion about moving some of them up behind the fairgrounds by the water plant, some other places have been suggested, some people have volunteered barns, I volunteered some areas out by some storage units that I own, and I think we can move them out of the areas that they're, you know, they're a nuisance in, so hopefully that'll come along, and they're gonna come to the council with some suggestions for an ordinance that would enforce spay and neuter, if a stray cat, if a cat was let out roaming free, and got picked up in one of the traps where they're trying to spay, or trap feral cats to spay and neuter, they would, they're asking that there be spay and neuter in an ordinance, that domestic cats need to be spayed and neutered unless somebody has a breeder's license, so, but that will probably come to council in the next month or so. Is there any old business we need to finish up?
Thank you for putting that together, because it would have took us months to get that done, and you've got, I think you're gonna come up with a common good for everyone.
I hope so, I hope so.
Get back to the minutes, Wade, how, how is the lights, getting them ready, the lights on?
Yeah, we got them on.
Waiting on Mike right now.
Yeah, I'm sound out by the contractor, we're ready to go.
He's only got two people that are willing to climb that tower.
Yeah, so he's only got certain employees that are willing to go up there and work, so he's, he's got, they're starting on another project that got finished, and see what's there down the hill, so probably.
I'd rather launch a stream wave, but he wouldn't do it.
What I think, but, I haven't signed those, what is it we're supposed to sign? What did you say we were supposed to sign?
Employee manual.
Oh, the manual, whole manual itself.
Yeah, just, yeah, I think Christine Ener put those on, so she's pretty sure.
She's got hot copies.
Yeah, she's got.
She's got that, she's got hot copies.
In new business, we have a resolution to approve the alcohol sales for the VFW war post 2881, we passed amendment to an ordinance allowing 501(c)(3) to get this variance to sell, but it was on an approval basis from the council. When we passed that provision to the ordinance, we didn't verbally say that we actually approved the VFW, and so they, to make sure that this is all covered before they start selling, they came back and asked us to have a resolution, so it was noted that they had approval to do so.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City participation in the countywide cleanup, we discussed that at committee meeting, and just want to let you know that Wade's got some employees and some equipment going through the fairgrounds to help the county out in their countywide cleanup, which is October 13th.
October 13th, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, they did put out some information, items will not be accepted, including refrigerators, freezers, air conditioners, dehumidifiers, they are not going to be accepted, household hazardous materials issue, but those can go down the meth and sanitation, though the recycling center, no yard waste, construction debris, or just ordinary trash, they will be taking electronics, junk iron, furniture, mattresses, carpet, and they are also taking towels this year.
Also in the new business, we had the Horner property annexation. Just a second.
I was just gonna say, Wade, when you say no toxic, sorry to get detailed here, but old refrigerators that have freon on them still, they accept those?
They will not, they have refrigerators listed, they will not take them, but you can, if the freon's taken out, you can actually take those to, I believe, TRG?
Long as they're evacuated.
Usually you have to show the lines clearly, what type of an index are they?
Yeah, but basically you have to have them tagged, that's.
Yeah, because you can't just cut them and evacuate them, it's illegal, so.
Right, well, just out of curiosity, if, if they won't take them, what do you do with them?
Take them in the junkyard.
So I thought somebody just said you had to have the freon out.
Yes, you do.
You have to.
You have to take them to a heat and air individual to have the freon evacuated, and they're tagged, and then you can take it to Tom Bar.
And there's a cost associated with it?
Yes.
I just was curious, I didn't know.
We had the Horner property annexation, Dan Horner has asked that we annex his house at 624 Tamarind, that's a far south end of Tamarind, on the right-hand side there, voluntary annexation, Van has got the documents prepared, and has said that everything has been completed for this, and we need to pass this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion in a second to place.
First reading by title only.
Second. Okay, a motion in a second to place this ordinance on its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending section 14.16.16 zoning map of the city of Harrison to annex Horner tract and assigning R1 zoning.
Is Mr. Horne here?
No, he's not. Van did mention to me today, when he brought this, that it's not, there's not an emergency, but it would be helpful if we could go through the readings tonight, and.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and go through the readings, just won't be a need for the emergency clause part, if you were so inclined.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and, and.
A reading by title only.
Second and third readings?
Yeah.
Or just second?
Second and third.
How second that?
Have a motion to suspend the rules, place the ordinance on its second and third reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
An ordinance amending section 14.16.16 zoning map of the city of Harrison to annex Horner tract and assigning an R1 zoning.
That is, oh, I have a new business, I have a comment on the sales tax issue, that I kinda wanted to clear up, there's a couple of rumors going around that the, if the city, if the citizens pass the one cent tax for trash swap, that the, at some point in time a future council can take that trash away and start charging for it again, if that would happen, the ordinance is drafted, and the ballot language is drafted that would eliminate the sales tax, so if the city would ever choose to charge for that trash again, the sales tax would go away. The second thing, it has been said that, that if the city gets this tax passed, and the city starts paying for the trash, the city's gonna go into the trash business, or the mayor's gonna go into the trash business, that is not the case, we have already signed a 10-year contract with Inland Services that starts January 1, and they have options to renew it for another 10 years after that, so that is not the case. Another thing is that all of this tax is going to pay for trash, the tax, if it passes, about one-fourth of it will pay for trash, and the other three-fourths of it will pay to the general fund for improvements in our equipment, infrastructure, wages, to get our wages up to where they're competitive with the surrounding communities, to where we don't lose our employees to surrounding communities or the sheriff's department, so, just wanted to clear those things up, because those things have been out there. So, just wanted to clear those things up, because those things have been out there. Any comments from the aldermen? Citizens?
I'd like to make one comment. I would, when it comes to the tax issue, if you guys have studied our budget for the last three years, you know that we do not have the ability to continue to operate the same level we are now, because we keep, we're gonna keep digging into our reserves, and one of these days, the reserve's gonna be gone. And when we put this on the ballot, we put it on the ballot so that the citizens of Harrison could vote on it. To me, it doesn't make any difference how we feel about it personally, it's, we should be looking out for the best interest of the city, and if the best interest of the city is to have a sales tax, and the citizens agree with that, then we should support the citizens in making this work. And we should do our best to make sure that none of this money is spent in a manner which the citizens wouldn't want it to be spent, and that we do our due diligence on any expenditures that we do to make sure we're doing that. And that's all I have to say about that.
Motion to adjourn? I just wanna check with, and find out, was it your intention, anyone's intention, on the Horner annexation, we did not adopt that ordinance. Did you intend to do that, or just leave it on the second and third readings?
That's correct. Van's comment was what, he would like to have the second and third reading done, is that what he said?
It was his feelings that, because it was a voluntary annexation, and the steps had been taken, that we'd like to move it through tonight, so that after it runs its 30 days, it will become effective. Otherwise, we'll wait till the next meeting.
So, what did he ask?
Which would take a motion to adopt, yeah. Motion to adopt.
Second. Have a motion to adopt in a second on the Horner annexation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. If that's all.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn in a second.